It is now, okay.
Dean, you're out of the idea, Bob, more of a Charlie.
We're gonna start the board of selectmen meeting for Thursday, March 28th, the last one of the month. Recorder's on, all three second to present, town administrator, recording secretary, and Mr. Leo Martel, recording for those who in town, one of you have been. Okay, gentlemen, I have two sets of minutes here.
Motion to approve the regular minutes of the March 21st, 2019 meeting as amended.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Any discussion in those minutes? There are no discussion, all in favor? Okay, we have a non-public set of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of March 21st, 2019.
I don't need to work with the members, right?
That is correct.
Correct. Second.
Any further discussion of this non-public?
Time of them?
The time was 8:30 PM, 8:03 PM.
8:03 PM. Somebody wants a second?
Bob did.
He did, yeah.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Right, just like my great grand or...
That name on?
No, I'm talking to Mike.
Okay, that's the old business. Now we're open up to the public, anyone in the public for coming?
Yep, Lee Martel. So at the last DHAC meeting, one of the members asked if the town...
What was the acronym for, acronym again?
DHAC. The Barred Historical Maintenance Committee.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
One of the members asked if the town pound cleanup was completed yet, and I answered nah. So is that still?
What did you answer?
No.
Oh, I thought it was nah.
Nah, there you go.
Well, the thing is, I thought the butter was going to look at the tree that's close to the edge of the rocks and possibly move it this year, and then later in the fall, I think it's going to make it an annual thing for the...
For the hog reefs.
Hog reefs to basically go in.
So what you're telling us is that it might get done next year.
Well, the thing is, a general cleanup, yes, but the thing is, there's an issue with this, with the... With the budding shrubbery next door.
Right, right. We realize the issue, we've been discussing that issue for years. Seems like nobody wants to step forward.
He did say when we were there that day, because he came running down, that he promised he would trim that tree or bush this year. So, um, I've been asking, as I walk by or see them, if he has trimmed it yet. As kind of a side joke, because it was four feet of snow there this winter, but I think we will follow up as a board.
Yeah, I think you need to, because, I mean, you know, we know what the history is there.
It's good pruning time right now, I just did all my...
Yeah, whether you burn it or not, you know, I mean, we know what the history is there, and like I said, it's been years, this thing. And it just doesn't seem to get done.
Well, I think some progress was made this year, some progress, just the general maintenance of the route.
Well, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about that particular tree.
I understand, yeah.
That particular aspect of it, the project.
Maybe we can invite him in and just chat, have a friendly chat with us.
One thing I did notice is the door obviously doesn't operate. I thought maybe we would make that one a little project for the hog reefs to make that door operate this year, you know, that front entryway door.
The one I hit my head on all the time?
And we had talked a little bit later that fall about maybe pointing up some of them stones, because part of it has slipped down into the inside and outside.
Yeah, right, but I feel it's a waste of time until we straighten everything and all the other mess out. Because that particular plant is undermining and uprooting some of that stony sides. Why bother fixing one side while the other side's falling apart?
Lee, it was supposed to, we were supposed to look into some potential deeds on that right away.
Was Ken Swase gonna look at that?
I don't know, I can bring it to his attention, I think he really enjoys looking at that.
This will put us, give us in some sort of perspective of what rights we have, like, maybe extends beyond that.
I have those copies in the...
I think you have the right to at least maintain your peo, the town's property.
Right.
So if something's encroaching on that, you have that right.
Absolutely, I can, any homeowner.
So we may not be able to approve that tree, but we could at least prune it back to where it's affecting our...
Probably even cut the roots on that side that are going underneath and pushing it out.
Yeah.
You know, something's gotta get done with that.
Right.
You just can't leave it like that, because you're just asking for a bigger and bigger problem is what you're looking, waiting for, you know? And you're talking about fixing that while it's getting ruined on the other side, what would be the sense of all that?
Right. Thank you, Leo, you put this stuff on the agenda first, thank you.
Well, it'd be nice, because as I say, this has been going on for years.
We made step one, but step two is to get the final solution on that side.
Yeah, yeah, like I said.
I think we can bring him in and chat with him, what do you think, Bob?
That would be a smart thing to do.
Friendly chat first, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a smart thing.
We were talking about it last year, but we really never really...
I think we did see the original layout of that, it was a 32-foot by 32-foot structure of such a height with an oak rail on the top of the stonework. I do remember seeing that copy.
If you just will follow up on that, maybe.
Yeah, the surrounding property layouts would be handed through.
Have we checked with NHMA legal to see what they would advise us to do?
I don't, I don't, I don't know at this point.
I don't think we should go that way right now.
Well, I think legally you can remove anything that's damaging your own property. If my tree was ruining your garage...
I'd be cut off, hey, the tree's coming over right.
You know?
The thing is, before we do any cutting, I give me a courtesy to...
I understand, all I'm saying is some things gotta be done, they can't just, that's that can, proverbial can, you guys keep talking about kicking, well, that's been kicked down the road for five, six years now.
Oh, we only did it for one year.
No, it's been getting kicked...
No, no, this board.
No, it was there before. He just decided to clean up the town pound last year.
Right.
But prior to that, we still had issues, and nobody wanted to step forward to deal with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can follow up on that this year and get a...
Give me an ax.
There's easier ways, I'll share with you another way later on. Okay, do you have money, Lee?
I do, $50, that was given as a donation for the New Hampshire Energy Expo that the Energy Committee will be holding in April.
Want to make a motion, Dave, for me?
Sure. I'll make a motion per RSA 31:95-2, Roman numeral 3, paragraph B. Accept the donation to the Dunbar Energy Committee in the amount of $50 from the vendor donation for the 2019 New Hampshire Energy Expo.
Second. Any discussion? I don't have any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Take care of it, Lee. Okay, next item that we have a schedule to look at.
Do you want to go out of order, it looks like Linda has some appointment papers?
Yeah, you got some here too.
Unless you're gonna be a lot...
It might be a few minutes, but...
That'd be, give me a chance to go down and work with Hope, if you don't mind, thank you.
Oh, go ahead, do, finish that, come right back. Oh, you wanna do it now?
Yeah.
Okay, do it now, forget it.
Thank you.
We have one, we have some...
There's three of them in there.
Actually, there's another.
And then you should talk about the welfare.
Right, so, here's another, there's... Do you have three in pile?
Yep.
Conservation, conservation, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26.
Oh, this breaks the motion, but being two. Yes, I just got the Donald J. Larson one today.
I'll make a motion to appoint the following people to the Conservation Commission for the term ending March 2022. Barbara Watkins, Ronald Jarvis, and John A. Groves.
Second. Any discussion? Here now, all in favor?
Aye.
Thought you were lefty for a minute there.
No.
No, it says skirmish.
I'll make a motion to appoint Donald J. Larson to the Dunbar Old Home Day Committee, term ending March 2020.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
You all ears? What's that? You all ears?
Yes.
Okay. We get more information on the Mr. Welfare Director that, obviously, was elected from the town floor in 2004, uh, 2000... Two, 2004, was I mean...
Alright, so, you know how we do hog reefs?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the time, back then, we not only did hog reefs from the floor, we also openly elected the constables, because we didn't have police officers, at that time we had constables. We also elected the overseer of welfare. For some reason, it just kind of stopped, and I didn't really notice it until the thing with the welfare came up. So I did have Hope do some research, and we found that the last time they were elected from the floor was the town meeting 2004. The minutes for the 2004 town meeting.
Okay.
You see, it was Margaret Janitor. And then 2005 rolled around, and the only people elected from the floor were the hog reefs. And that would be about the time that we did away with the constables and went to the PD. So, um...
There you go, Linda.
Thank you. I understand you have a statute on welfare?
Correct.
What have you got?
It's RSA 165:2. It says, it's pertaining to how the welfare is administered, it does not contain any term of office, it's talking about terms. And we can, the select board have talked, in the absence of a term, RSA 41:3 provides that all town officers should continue until the next annual meeting. It applies, the term defaults to one year unless otherwise specified. And the thing is, we can, I believe that we...
We can extend it up to three years.
Right. And...
Also in here, it says that, when I read it today, that even though it's a one-year term, until somebody's reappointed, or they are reappointed, they can continue their standard regular duties as the welfare director. So it's not as much of an emergency as we might have thought, I guess.
Well, here, just so that you know, up until that meeting, they had always been elected. And I haven't seen anything in the town where the town voted to change that position from elected to appointed. So there needs to be some more research and some housekeeping done to make that right. What I'd like to suggest in the meantime is that Jeannie be sworn in, because she's not official until she's...
Oh, absolutely, she should be, but I wanted them to...
Right, but she said to Hope that something about the three-year term, and which is another thing about why I want to get back to, we need to come up with something so that things are communicated. Because I was not aware that you were looking at a three-year term. So we really all need to...
That's something, we just read it today.
Just today.
That was, I was just discussing with her if she was interested, or if we would go on that one-year term that you were recommending.
So we're allowed as selectmen to make it up to a three-year term.
Correct.
But if it's a one-year term and we sign up paperwork like everybody else, I don't have a real issue with that either.
But had it been elected all along, how did it get to appointed without an official? There had to be some official action on the part of the town to change that.
But according to the RSA, he says there is no action to elect a welfare director.
Officers, who they be, and you'll have to share this, I might, I'll give it to you when you can recap it. It's 66017, section three there.
Want to read it? Yeah. Town officer specified in this section may be elect by ballot or by other means in annual town elections or meetings by the voters of the town, as determined by said voters. Such an officer may not be elected by official ballot to an annual town election first, following establishment of the office. When the town votes to establish such optional office, the town may also then vote to elect by any means at the same meeting officers serve until the next annual meeting, annual town election or meeting, or may vote to authorize the officer with the power to fill the vacancy in the office that is provided RSA, ha, ha, ha. To appoint someone until the next annual town meeting, this section is, so basically it says, one of them is one of the constables, tax collector, and they say welfare, overseer of welfare. Right.
It says by ballot or by other means, so without doing a ton of research...
In that RSA, it says the other means are for us.
So the other means must have been what we had been doing, the same as we do the hog reefs. So I think, so we need to figure out...
But the thing is, the hog reef is almost an honorary position, where this is a very...
It's mandatory by law.
Mandatory by law, and but it's also, it's got penalties to the town if we fail to do it right.
Exactly, so we need to figure out a way to make this right. My suggestion would be is to square Jeannie in for the one-year term, and then we'll look at amending this at next town meeting, because it almost looks like the voters have to vote to change that position from elected to appointed.
Now, in the previous director, you knew her better than any of us, was she appointed or elected, do you recall?
She was appointed, up until 2004, they had been elected at the open meeting.
I think that RSA gives the opportunity as the select body to appoint.
Do you want that RSA?
But depending on when the legislature changed that change, and if it came after 2004, that change supersedes anything you have currently.
But which change, which RSA change was originally?
If the legislature passed...
This is the first RSA you have.
Legislation that created the RSA, that's there now, after 2004, it supersedes anything that happened prior to 2004.
Are you talking RSA 165, that one?
Yes.
Is there, is there, do you have a copy of the RSA, or is it an email referencing the RSA?
The select board has a fairly wide discretion on how they want to set up the administration process, as there is nothing in the statute to bring into the term of office. Let's talk about the term.
Is that the actual RSA, or is that a reference to the RSA?
No, that's the legal interpretation.
So that's the reference to it, that's not like one of these, I have to see the RSA, because I think what Bob's talking about is the dates at the bottom, that they, that that...
Right, that's what I'm saying, if they pass that after 2004, that's a new point.
You want to look it up, RSA 165:2, to see when the last legislation was on that?
So we got a little more...
In the absence of a term appointment, town officers shall continue the office until the next annual meeting or until other, yeah, so that's just the same.
That's essentially what you're saying.
That implies that the term defaults to one year unless otherwise specified.
Regardless of the term, we got to figure out how it went from elected to appointed without any legal action by the voters.
But this even talks about police officers, police chiefs being elected, I mean...
But they were, right, but they, there was some action, I'm sure there was a vote, and I have to go, I just haven't been able to research everything.
Okay.
Okay, there's, I want to just do one fire at a time.
All right. Let her chief continue, I don't think, we can square her in for one year.
Let's do that.
And just so she continues her duties, and we'll get it straightened out one way or the other, we're just going to take a little research here.
Yeah, we had changed the police department, and you guys were there, and maybe you, David. I think there was an official action to not have them be constables anymore, I think we started having them as officers. So there was some action to change that, but...
Because we, the police chief is under a contract with us.
Right, he was never a constable, Joe Milliotto was a constable at one time.
Oh, right, right, but constables, police chiefs, or police officers shall be elected pursuant to the...
And I brought these RSA strictly right now for overseer of welfare, because it's just too, it's too much.
Exactly.
Too much to find out all at once. So, Jeannie was sworn in for...
One year.
No, I'm sorry, she filled out the paperwork for the one we were catching up on, the previous year.
She said she is interested in continuing.
She still needs to be sworn in, because the term...
Is tremendous.
She can't act as overseer unless she's sworn in. She's not officially sworn in, so we're targeting...
Did you square her in last year?
No, that was a housekeeping thing we did, that's why we did two terms.
But the thing is, what were, let's go back, what were the dates on her square her in last year?
It was after, at April, April, May.
Because it says right in that RSA that she could continue her duties until...
It's upstate?
Yeah.
Okay. Because her term ends March of 2019, the one she's taken her oath for ended 2019, which is a couple days.
Well, we just, I'll make a recommendation that we do a one-year as an interim one.
Well, we have this one year right now.
That's fine.
So we'll just act on this paper, and...
Until we, until we get our act together. And so Jeannie will continue her duties until we can find her, get our act together.
Which RSA such as...
Yeah, which you can do anyway, too.
Okay, and then, so we'll do further research on welfare and figure out what's what.
Yeah. She's doing a great job, so I, you know, I want to continue, help her continue.
Oh, I have no doubt, and I'm not even concerned, I'm just concerned about getting the paperwork right, that's my focus right now.
It seems like we have a quandary whether it's elected or versus appointed, that's what we have...
And well, the quandary is, it was elected up until 2004.
What happened then?
What happened then, and there's nothing official to change it from elected to appointed, and that's...
Unless there was a law.
Lee, do you think we could present that question to the...
But even if it was...
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll do a, we'll do a follow-up.
We'll do a follow-up.
On NHMA, see if they can do some work for us.
Perfect, that's perfect.
Linda, do you think Fred might know? Seems how he would be the one to...
He would be another one to ask, yeah, thank you.
He knows why, you know?
Oh, I'll ask him, thank you.
Because I can remember the constables, but I don't remember, okay, I don't know if they just created, started to create a police department and eliminate some of the constables. Because for a while it was mixed, and all of a sudden it changed.
He likes coming, Fred comes, likes coming in.
I know he does. Can have him do the research.
Milfoil.
We talked last week, I had said, just to let you know, we've only got a committee of one for the Milfoil Research Committee, and his term is up next year. So, I had mentioned you folks might want to start recruiting people, or think about whether you still want to keep the committee, and the question came up, how was it formed? So it was formed by the legislative body at a town meeting in 2012, it was an amendment to an article, and there is...
The thing is, I don't know if we need it.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, we have a, we have a, basically a consultant from the state level who comes in.
Well, we do have one individual, who is that person you're looking to appoint, Linda?
Lou.
I'm not looking to appoint anybody for Milfoil.
Okay.
Right.
No, she just says that we're...
If we're gonna have, in the past, it wasn't committed, we should.
It's a committee in the past.
All right, so do they just dissolve on their own, is that how you...
The appointment papers come, and come and they come, and then some years they don't come, so...
Okay, so what we have currently is, when I apply for, or I bring out an application for Milfoil treatment, you guys authorize someone to sign on behalf of the town, and someone to act from the residents or the town to act on behalf...
Which we've always had one person.
Correct, which would be, that's through the contract with the state.
Right.
And he's the only one that coordinates the weed watchers, which we get state money for a...
And the diaries that come in.
And so I don't know that there's any committee officially going on in New York.
No, for technical advice, we refer to the state, defer to the state.
And they have the tools to...
Right.
So do we want to go back and look at the original committee and ask members if they want to sign up for it or not?
It was, sworn by the, led by the voters at town meeting, so I'm not sure if they're the ones who can ask courts to be dissolved, that I don't know, that's a question for, and you've got a copy there.
Let's give it to Lee and ask the municipal association, especially since it's kind of dissolved.
That's, yeah.
One of them.
And you want to know how to, how we dissolve it?
Right.
Okay. And I'll...
That might have to be done by a voter, I'm not sure.
Or do we need to keep it so that Lou is part of that, so he can sign it?
I think he's interested in...
Lou's not interested in the...
It's Bob, um, Bob Leonard, yeah.
Bob Leonard. Only for the simple fact that he has to sign the grants and stuff as one of the residents?
It's usually the town, I usually, on that paper, he signs, signs as acting for notice to butters and working with the people on site. I, as the town official, be here in the office, sign.
So we need him to sign.
He already has, you already have, January 13th.
We're not usually, if someone's signing this...
We have, but he might have to sign as a committee, maybe as a grant, as well, I was thinking.
I think we set up the committee as a, in a, like, we're really looking at language. And furthermore, second, to appoint the committee to monitor all public quarters in town, residents of Milfoil, and other, not great. Well, we don't have a committee doing that, we have a state. Because I think they, they don't have the action, because it's a technical over by the state.
As long as we have a grant from Milfoil, then they...
Right, the committee was to monitor public quarters in town.
And then the grant is the requirement that we match a certain number of hours to get reimbursed.
Also, when you talk to municipal association, we may not have to dissolve that, it could always sit there as a committee, and we could kind of fund it with people as need be, and if Milfoil comes up and...
But that's a good question to ask, how do you dissolve a committee that's...
Dissolve it and/or, and/or leave it there.
Yeah, it may want to, maybe, yeah.
You wouldn't have to go back to the voters and ask them, they have to select people, could appoint some people to it.
Yeah, if it became a propaganda.
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay, let's move on. All you discuss.
Linda, are we all set with you?
Yes, are you all set with me?
I think so, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't care whichever one you guys want. Now, I did mention to Lee last week, I think we should go into the full months. Not halfway into May and halfway into September, I think we should do the full months of each.
Oh, wait, are you saying half-meet every week?
Every other week, yes, right, not in the middle of May, not until the middle of September, but do it in the full months of each.
Just like it is in the lay-in?
Yeah.
So do you want to do that and have, if something comes up?
Yeah, we'll just have a special meeting.
A meeting at the call of the chair?
Yeah.
I could also post that on the website, because this was very informational to do the research, because I saw what it was that they posted on there, and then...
You guys did see the research, Linda?
And it did say that on occasion, that they would have a special meeting, and it would be publicly noticed on the website.
Yeah, Bob, because if we decide we're going to do our, you know, policy review or whatever, we'll have a special meeting.
Workshop, I think.
But I mean, if there's something that comes up that we have to act upon, it could be a call of the chair.
Right. Yeah, and I'm available any, anytime during the day if that comes up.
Thanks.
Okay, that works, then, we have consensus A then?
Yeah, I have not picked any vacation schedules, so...
All right. On the 30th, I may, it's an iffy day for me, just for the board, I just don't know where's the... 30th of May. Okay. And so that's iffy day, I'll, I'll, we'll work for information, but... You want to work for little hearts.
So we're gonna go with A?
I am, I'm set up for little hearts, and little hearts for, oh, we don't have...
Now, are the green the days we're meeting?
Yes.
They're also known as the tops, so, I don't know, they're a little smaller in font, but I tried to reduce the four months early on in a smaller size, so I can increase the font size on the other.
Lee, do you like these? It's a schedule for summer.
Yeah, really.
That would be helpful to the, yeah, I got a copy of cream, it'd be helpful for your video record, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You guys okay with the May and September portion of it?
Can I ask a question, what, now what?
The green ones are the meeting dates.
Okay.
The lined out ones are not meeting. So for the public's information, I did do research on towns similar in our size, and we are grouped in a category of 19 towns, and of the 19 towns, there's only four towns that meet weekly, and every other town is either first Monday, and third, or second, and fourth, throughout those towns. And then a couple of them that have the dual meetings, other, every other, have one meeting in the morning and/or a workshop on one of the meetings. So it was, there's a lot of information, I think that was interesting.
Yeah, and if something comes up, I have no problem meeting.
Yeah.
If there's an emergency.
Okay. All right, moving on, get that, take it, so, on, we have consensus on, so, okay. Now, this is a, this is for the, I just leaned into this research on this one too. This is for the ex-official member of the, now there's alternate for the planning board.
Yeah.
And we just have to make a motion, just a motion in this, in this setting by the board, that we appoint an alternate ex-official, get it recorded in our minutes, and it's done deal, no appointment papers needed.
I did scan that to Linda, she didn't respond back as to whether she felt any differently, but I think that's...
It's really a... No, I read that, and I'm in agreement with it too.
Right.
Get the proper naming and wording on it, and that's exactly what I was speaking of when we did the amendments.
So the thing is, at this point, I like to make a motion to nominate, or to appoint Dave Nolte as an alternate ex-official member of the planning board.
And I was like, give you a motion.
Any further discussion on that?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, so in my absence, you gotta cover it, and you can vote.
Yeah, Lena, if we can keep that on file, maybe and give it to.
I haven't, and she's been scanning it in an email, but I put these things, once we've discussed them, in a legal book, so that we have, there's a selection section.
I didn't know if we wanted to have the planning and zoning coordinator.
Donna has it as well, Donna does have it, yeah.
Next one is, um, Michael Underwood, uh, we have a, uh, he's been doing our, um, spring ball cleanup, burgled mowing in terms of the, uh, the town office, town commons, ball field, DS ball field, and the town leach field behind the churches directed by the Dunbar Royage. I have his original from two thousand thirteen, and it went up approximately, uh, a hundred dollars.
Yeah, it looks like a hundred dollars.
So can I just say that Mike Underwood has been bidding on our lawn, um, care for the town offices since, I believe it's like in the mid-two thousands, not even this long, but, um, he also visits cemeteries and was outvoted for that. So, um, he has not changed his price for over ten years, and he mentioned to me, he didn't wanna lose the bid, but snow is leaving the grounds, he's still interested in taking care of our lawn, and he's, but with the cost of fuel, he's had to eat a lot of that.
It's a minimal, minimal increase, my only, from a, from a ethical point of view, do we open it up for other bidding prices?
Well, um, where we amended our bid policy, we had to put it out the bid because it was so small, we changed it to a ten thousand dollar threshold, so the board has an option to extend the service, last year, we, I did three telephone phone quotes, and he still came in at that thirty-nine hundred, he's increased it slightly for the.
I think.
For twenty-twenty, for next year, not this year, this is a two-year contract.
Right, each year, there's a.
A hundred dollar.
Hundred dollar increase, but at least we can budget for, and I do budget more than what he asks for in that lawn care for loam, or seeding, or anything like that, that we might have to use.
No, I think, uh, he's done an exceptional job here, and I think that when we're comparing him to the people that do the mowing and the cemeteries, I think that, you know, it looks far better on our side of the fence, it seems so. I'm in agreement to, uh, make a motion to accept the, uh, twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty season contract from Michael Underwood for the mowing of the, uh, and spring cleanup.
So, and so it'll be in terms of two years, like, may we move it, like, for the.
Yeah, I, I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
And, and to give you a difference is, and you know that, it's cause we're having a debate now. Dave's right, we had to go several times with the guy that does the cemetery, just to get him, get leaves and brush out, cause it was leaving pile here and there, you know, and I know he wasn't too happy, but.
We can call Mike anytime, school communicates to us if there's an extra need, like, uh, an event on the, on the ball field, and they feel that grass is a little tall, he'll come right out, and there's never been any hesitation for him there.
I, I wanna only ask him to make a, make another courtesy visit to the, uh, school, introduce himself, make sure that they have full numbers of you and him, so if there's any problems, the school can communicate with.
Okay.
And that was a liaison visit, that would be always helpful, cause the school, they, I want, I don't want to forget that, that we have a good relationship with this gentleman, he'll do anything they wanna do, not during the school day, for example.
Is all in favor?
We assume discussion.
Okay.
Point of order, no. Okay, anything else we wanna add to that?
Do you wanna include the, the amounts, or?
I did not want to, only cause contract, if it ever went out for a bit, we didn't wanna have it out there.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
I just did the dates with her.
Now, all in favor? Aye. So be it, that's, that's gonna happen. Okay, um, I have another item here, it seems like, uh, this goes, this precedes us, it goes back to two thousand seven, two thousand eight, there's some, uh, outstanding, uh, it looks like the town has fifteen hundred dollar nestrel, or some monuments that were placed on a subdivision. And, um, obviously, back in twenty-nine, we got some legal opinions, uh, most recently, and the administrator from the planning zoning that was looking for guidance from a slip, what we wanna do. I don't, I'd say, why don't we sit on this for a week, and make copies everywhere, and so you can have copies of both the legal opinions, and, uh, we'll come back to this next week and make a decision on it next week.
Okay.
Okay, Dave? And, uh, meantime, if you can get out, any other further information about what work needs to be done, as far as I see monuments, is it one, two, or fifteen hundred dollars is a lot of money for monuments?
I think it was two hundred apiece, if I recall.
So, uh, uh, we need to know numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, depending on, if they're in the middle of what, might it cost a lot to install them, or is it market easy when they're friendly?
So, I think she's, she's gotta use the building inspector to actually, uh, maybe look at where they may have to go. So, that's next week, if you just make a copy.
Do you want all this sent to you electronically?
Yeah, we can just read through it.
Yeah, okay. Right, listen, all right, now, then we have an update from the, uh, just a couple projects, uh, going on the planning zoning, it's just good reading, it's, lets us know what's going on, this is from the, uh, Mike Cummings Building Inspector, of some of the projects he's working on town. Also, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay. There was a, uh, issue, issue in the, in the, um, town clerk's office of upgrading the desks, making a little bit better ergonomic workstation. They came up with a, Donna Dunn actually recommended this, and it was, it looks like a great, um, uh, working tool, as far as a desk, cause it can vary heights, and they can raise it a little, and, uh, I think she has, actually has an item like that, and so she came highly recommended from her, so.
Will it go up as high as they want, like, the forty-two inch?
Yes, and so, right now, they're, uh, they're asking if we should authorize that purchase, I think it's been banted around for two years now, I've been hearing about this, and they finally got a desk that they, it's, it's a little bit better than just one of those smaller tables that go up, cause it allows more workspace.
Is this the desk that they would like though?
Yes, this, it's coming from them.
It's the same size as the table that's there, and it has.
This is, this came from the joint loss, so this is what they recommended, uh, the optional items, so, we're not gonna pursue the optional items.
Okay, no, I would love to see that taken care of, cause that's been, as Leo said, gone around about a year now, it's time.
So the way Linda approached the, the committee, uh, this week, is she said that Donna has just purchased it, she's gonna go to her house and look at it, get a feel of how it works, and then if she feels it would work, she said it was about seven hundred and fifty dollars, isn't what she said?
Seven thirty-four.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so the thing is, I'd like to just, uh, give the approval here, then you're gonna actually, when she gets the word, we don't have to wait another week for.
I've, I've seen Donna's, and it's really good.
Seen rugged?
Oh, yeah, it's really good idea.
Yeah, cause we have computers and, and.
I mean, she stands up and pulls it up right up, so she can stand near it and drop it down.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of this desk, subject to the, um, input from the town clerk.
I can agree with the consensus.
That's a second to the motion.
Yeah, on, any further discussion on that? So Lena, we'll make the, we'll authorize the purchase it, but the thing is, we're gonna wait until we get the final say from the town clerk.
Town clerk, yeah, I'll just let him know with a few, a few briefs.
I'd like to get that done and over with.
Okay, now, all in favor of the, uh, motion?
Aye.
Okay, it's done.
And then we'll take care of one item on your schedule when you meet on the town buildings.
Oh, yeah, I had, what we, that was it, that was it, that was a project.
Now, is this gonna come out of the maintenance budget?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't have a lot, yeah, I don't have a lot in my supply line, and that would show up a lot.
Okay. The thing is, um, she may, I don't know what she has, uh, she may have to, uh, look at seating as options, talk to her about seating, maybe a separate item too.
Seating, yeah.
And I, I told her for seating, uh, it, it should be done, seating is such an individual type thing, and one chair doesn't fit all. And I recommended to her, as she mentioned, she, excuse me, that she goes to Staples, has one, sit down and try the one that you might work for you, and then come back with a recommendation, and so I would rather personalize it to the.
I would agree with that on seating.
Okay. And the desk we can go, uh, okay, I'm gonna go through the inbox now. We have a, another employee leaving the, um, transfer station. And, um, we'll further discuss that later tonight, uh, we also have, um, central regional, central, uh, New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, looked at projects, um, that fit into the DOT, such as the Page Corner, and they ranked, so it's a, a strong recommendation, but we were number two in the central region.
Correct, that's, so Donna goes to that TAC meeting, and she said that this is a subcommittee of, uh, that group, and they look at all the different projects, they did put us, rank us at.
Two.
Priority.
But that's only, that's not one section of New Hampshire, then it goes into the DOT.
Right, and she said, right, and she said she would, um, they would be bringing that before the next group, at the next meeting, so.
Okay, I have a step increase, and I think we talked about this already with the, uh, with the police department, it's routine.
It's just for the paper trail of the, um, auditor, that goes in that personnel file.
Previously discussed at other meetings, so. Remember, if you recall, last week, we also have another item there, one of the, uh, new employees, the transfer station, is a handyman, he's got a resume in here, and just to read that, uh, I think we have some projects already, one project that spec came up to my, um, at the joint loss committee meeting again, the library door, the new door is slamming, is it can't adjust the, uh, the dramatics that hold the, uh, that close the door, are probably worn to the point where they can't do the function, can't function anymore.
This is on our new door?
Yes, it's similar, as you say, similar to a, to like a, like a, like a shock absorber.
We installed the old hardware for the.
So I think that might be a good project, at least, Lena, if you wanna, we could test them out on that, see how we would do on that, uh, I'm throwing that as a, as an idea. Bob, any idea on that?
Uh, well, let's find out first if he's, if he's gonna be interested in being around, oh, yeah, did he drop this off recently?
He sent it to an electronic one, so.
Yeah, it looks like he's.
No, it was just last week, yeah.
Last week or this week, yeah.
I have no trouble trying them on that, but, um, you know, door closers or something, that's normally a little more technical than a lot of people can.
Well, we, we, the thing is, one, first, can, would we agree we can spend the money on the door closer? That's the first thing, right, out of a maintenance line.
Yeah, might as well.
Yeah, okay, and that's.
Oh, yeah, it's just gonna create more damage.
Being a, being a brand-new door, I'd like to make sure that we use the existing holes that are in the door, and not create a bunch of new holes in a brand-new door.
Absolutely.
So it's not all, you know, I'd like to use a closer with similar holes.
Maybe the identical closer, I, I, I wouldn't mind taking it off and see if you can match it somewhere.
Right.
And, uh, it could be just, uh, for one day, it could be loose for the one day, while you're just going up to match it. So Lena, I'm gonna leave that to you, you need to.
Action, got it.
Yeah, the thing is, um, I agree doors are, uh, can be tricky sometimes, so, you need, that guy seems, he's got some experience.
Might want to try them out, see how they work.
And then if you have an alternate one, I'd be, I'd, I can't imagine it'd be more than a couple hundred dollars. Okay, next item, almost done. This is, uh, this is the information about, um, uh, uh, transfer station had some issues Saturday, small issues, but, uh, I think this should be handled at a management level, a lower management level, I don't think anything rises to our level, I guess, like, well, it's. I think it's just, it's more information only, I'm not, there's no action either.
It was, it was glad, glad to see that he did give us the information on what he had seen, though.
Right, right, and especially, I think some of that's a safety thing, so, he's, he's gonna, him and supervisor will have to work on that. Okay, next item, ethics committee meeting, Tuesday, April ninth, at seven-thirty, at this meeting here.
And that's open to the public as well.
Yeah. And my inbox is done, I'm gonna open up for public comment.
Have we heard from the roof, or?
Yes, we have, uh, he's, uh, waiting for the ground to basically dry, yeah, before it brings this coming out, yeah, so we have some work in progress.
Now, we're talking about the library roof.
Yes.
You know, I drove by today, um, just looked at the roof at the same plane as the slate, and on two sides I could not see any nails sticking up, so I'd like to know what Mike Cummings is speaking of, well, as far as nails sticking up on the roof, I mean. Lena, I looked at two sides on the library roof at the same plane as the slate, and I couldn't see any nails sticking up, so, could we get more information from Mike Cummings on the nails?
Okay.
Okay, anything else, okay, bring it back to Dave, to you.
Uh, that's all I had about the nails and the slate there, so.
Yeah, it's for you guys, so, okay, just to peruse, or, you know, give it a glance, but this'll give you some of the issues with the library, some of the things, you know, whether it's fire suppression, we talked about electrical, so this gives you the past of what was looked at, and it gives you some of the things that might, might be able to handle, you know, so, you can take those home, you can, erasure, you know, when you're sitting there watching a ballgame, and. Yep.
Bob, I didn't ask enough money.
That, that's a whole lot of things, it's not just.
That sounds good, thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Is that something that the committee is looking at and gathering together, or is that just something you're gonna present?
No, I, what we did is, what, what, we're picking is just maintenance items, things that aren't, I don't care what the function is gonna be of the place, but we talked about, there should be some kind of electrical and lighting up there, cause you go up there, in the evening, there's nothing, and the fire suppression, just to see if it's something that we can tackle.
Yeah.
Cause if something happens to the building.
Yeah, all in.
We're out, you know?
Right, no, I'm in agreement with that, Bob, and I'm great to have the, uh, stuff to look at, so we can see where we can, uh, try and budget some work in.
Now, I, this is coming from the administration, maybe?
No, this, I had it in my computer, and so I pulled out that information, cause that stuff, they had for what they want. The plans don't mean anything to us, but the numbers mean something, you know?
It's the original guy that was budgeting the job, Mike.
Gotcha, okay.
So, it's, there's a couple in there, and there, there's a couple of different, I think there's two different ones in there, but.
Okay.
It gives you an idea of what, and the electrical, if it takes a separate, uh, panel.
Do you want me to get a copy of just the cover sheet for keeping the office, or are you just gonna?
Sure, I can give you the one I have.
Well, it doesn't matter, I can just make a copy.
Cause I've got it, I've got it at home anyways.
Thank you, Bob. Like the, uh, like the fire suppression would benefit the whole.
Right, and, and something to do with some kind of electrical, you know, I mean.
Anything else, Bob?
That's it, that's all, oh, there's one other thing that I noticed today on the way in, is, there's no stop sign at the corner of Everett Dam Road and Mansion Road, the car in front of me almost went, uh, you know, cause there's no sign there, kept going, there was a car coming down Mansion Road, just barely missed getting clipped, so I don't know if that should be brought to.
It might be DOT, but I'll bring it to Jeff's attention.
Right, cause I don't know if any places, huh?
Mansion and Everett.
Everett Dam Road, yeah, that stop sign's gone, and if that, you know, it's a good thing that, that I swerve far enough away, so you can get the car.
I'll look a volunteer, they can take it off my street. We'll save some dollars, all right, uh, Linda, you have any last items before we're gonna go non-public, what are any last items?
I just had a question, can I have that RSA again for welfare, the one, I have written down RSA one sixty-five colon two, but that's not the one, that's a one-liner regarding administration of general assistance.
That's what he was referring to, he said, there's no, there's no RSA that sets the.
Term on it.
The term.
The term.
Oh, then maybe, in that case, may I have a copy of what he wrote, so I could try to make sense of it that way?
And he references, in the absence of a term of appointment, RSA forty-one-three.
Right, which is one of the ones I think I copied for you.
So he was only talking about the term in there, not so much what, an appointment is or a.
Versus electric.
Correct, so.
That's, that's the dilemma now.
That's the dilemma now, is the, first we have to figure out the elected to appointed, and then we'll address the.
Right, because the term, I'm happy with leaving it one year, as long as it's part of the regular signup of paperwork that you do, and.
But I, I'm, I'm concerned that, did we make a, um, there.
Did a previous board make a decision to, to make a change without checking with statutes, is what I'm thinking, so, it would be a good time to make that right.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll check on that, and then we'll let you know what we find out.
You know, with, looking at that, um, I mean, we can check on the, the constables too, but I'm fairly certain there was something official done on that end, of going from constables to police, but even over the past few years, there have been no appointments for building inspector. there have been no appointments for building inspector. Did, did at some point a board decide to change it just to a paid position as opposed to an appointment?
No, I think it was actually the select member of the building inspectors and then they decided to hire and appoint.
To change it to an employee position?
That's correct.
As opposed to a...
An appointment, right. It's, I think the time that I've been here has never been appointed. It's always...
Yeah, it was appointed when Kyle, it was appointed up until Kyle, perhaps?
Oh, so there's a lot of them that we have to look at.
There are a lot that we should revamp at some time.
I didn't realize that building inspector was appointed.
Because I always had, and I can dig out all those appointment papers, but
So, I guess the question for legal is how do we get former appointed positions and then give them the examples of these positions?
I saw them at welfare.
I don't think building inspector falls under the statutes as far as an appointment, but definitely the welfare does.
Yeah.
As far as elected and, and appointed.
Yeah, we just have to make the determination of was it, did the town make an action to make it happen or do we have to do it now retroactively?
I mean, since we've got such a good board to work with, I think this is a great time to really get this straightened up and laid out for future boards.
So, Lena's already got the, we gave her the charge. We talked to NHMA about that specific issue. Those will be complimented when you find out, but do we have a select board the authority to appoint versus elect? We appoint, we appoint in, when there's a vacancy over a lot of positions, but outright appoint versus elect.
Right, but the point is, is the, does the select board have the authority to just automatically change a position from elected to appointed?
Without, without the election body?
Right, that's the, that is the question. So, those are some of the, so we can look at a lot of them, but just not this week.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Work in progress, I guess.
Okay. Oh, wait, I'll take a copy of that.
This?
Yes, if you don't mind. I'm just going to make a copy.
Oh, by the way, just as you, your desk has been approved.
Oh, good, thank you.
Were you happy with that format of a desk?
Well, I still want to go down and look at Donna's.
That's what they said that.
Yeah.
It's contingent upon you approving.
Yeah, right. So, we'll look at Donna's and if it looks like it's the right thing, we'll talk to you about ordering it and then obviously you could need a chair.
Yeah.
Right, and the chair is going to have to be, as I said, a personal choice. You go to Staples.
So, Linda, you're aware that when I consult with NHMA, it's confidential, it's for a client, attorney for NHMA?
I, I'm well aware of that. Well, I know. It's asking me questions that I don't want to answer.
So, you're going to do that or do you want me to follow up with my questions and you're going to do your research on the RSAs?
Maybe we should work on this together so that we're not duplicating each other's moves. Would that work for you?
So, what, work on it together?
The thing is, you do the NHMA
Yeah?
And she'll do from, look for story, look for the history.
That works. But I've already given you this. I mean,
There's no more.
Prior to 2004, they were elected.
That's what I'm going to ask and we'll say the, at that year, it was an elected position. How do we?
You know what you could do, if you want to do some research, is try to go to the minutes of the select board that year because, and ask Fred Mullin too, because he was moderator.
See, I don't have time for that. I can, I can shoot a quick email to them, but I, I...
I don't have time either.
Oh, I agree.
But just start with the email because no matter what happens, we want to fix it.
Yeah.
You mean, have to agree, look, you've got, you've got to.
No, no, this is, this is not going to be instant fix. It takes another two, three weeks, that's fine.
It's just going to take a while. I'm taking vacation soon, so.
We don't want to overthink it, just ask.
We're just going to swing her in to cover ourselves.
What we're allowed to do.
Even though she's got the authority.
Looks like you got a year to go anyways.
Yeah, to cover herself.
Yeah.
To cover you guys.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Leo, we're going to go, we're going to make a motion. We're going non-public per RSA 91, colon, out.